Good evening. We'll start off tonight with prayer and pledge. Uh, we've got Councilman Balls back and I'd like you to lead us in prayer pledge.
Well, thank you. Can we all bow our heads for a moment if you choose? In the name of God, the most gracious and most merciful. We thank you for bringing us here today to take care of the business of the city and for the citizens to make sure everybody is whole. And Lord, please look over our fire, our police, and all the staff here at the City Hall. Thank you.
And now we have to pledge allegiance there by myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia, present. Councilmember Williams, present. Councilmember Balls, present. Mayor Potem Bench, present. Councilmember Oystash, present. Councilmember Garcia, present. Flores, present. Councilmember Copeland, mayor Moore.
Present.
We have nine members present and zero absent.
Thank you. Good evening again. Uh, we welcome back Councilman Ball who's been out recovering. Uh, pray that everything is well with him. Um, during this time, I need everybody, if you would, especially council members, I need you to silence your phones. I also need you to silence your tablets so that they don't go off either. This is a public meeting of City Council. I ask that the audience refrain from booing, clapping, or any of noxious behavior. Again, audience, if you wouldn't mind, please silence your phones. I didn't say turn them off. I just said silence them because if they ring, then we gonna start collecting them. Okay? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I do have some announcements, um, this evening. I want everyone to be aware that the agenda has been revised to include the consideration of two FOIA appeals and it's under the miscellaneous business. Also, the yard waste pickup has begun and collection is on your regular trash day. Yard waste stickers are available in the City Clerk's office during regular business hours. The city's waste convenience station is open the second Saturday of the month, so it will be open this Saturday, May 13th, from eight o'clock a.m. until 12 o'clock noon. City residents can drop off items not collected at the curbside. The Third Annual Team Up to Clean Up event will be this Saturday, May 13th. This is a citywide event. It's an effort to clean up litter and debris in various locations throughout the city. Individuals and organizations wishing to volunteer may visit the city's website to sign up. And kickoff will be at eight o'clock a.m. in front of City Hall and volunteers will return to wrap up at noon. Next on our agenda, Mayor, we have a proclamation. It's declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Month.
Is Tammy Johnson here? Ms. Johnson, can you come to the podium, please? You changed the name on me.
I'm sorry.
You changed the name. It will be read by Councilman Oystash.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City of Saginaw proclamation, whereas mental health is essential to everyone, everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas mental health will strike one in five adults and children in a given year, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status, and whereas people who have mental, people who have mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas an estimated two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illness and addictive disorders to American, to American business, government, and families has grown to 113 billion annually, and whereas community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community, and whereas the National Mental Health Association and its national partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and, and understanding of mental health and illnesses. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month in the City of Saginaw. And I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the state of Michigan to recommit to the community, to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health, and the need to appropriate accessible services for all people who have mental illnesses. In witness whereof, I, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this eighth of May in the year of our Lord, 2023. Signed, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of Saginaw. Councilmembers Annie E. Bench, Mayor Potem, Michael D. Balls, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Priscilla Garcia, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Oystash, and Reggie William II, and City Manager Tim Morales.
Thank you. Ms. Tammy?
Yes.
Not now. Come on back up, honey. I need you to say something. Please.
Yes, on behalf of Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority, my supervisor, Tim Neimeyer, and the CEO, Sandra Lindsay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
We are now at public input.
Speakers, I need you to remain courteous and respectful while individuals are speaking. You'll be called to the podium by the City Clerk. You have three minutes to, in which time you have to speak. The Clerk will be timing you. When your three minutes are up, you get a couple of seconds to wrap up your, your statement. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Wendy Sauner. Are you ready? Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Wendy Sauner. I live at 2106 Adams Boulevard. I'm here tonight to address problems associated with an abandoned property known as 2100 Adams Boulevard, which is adjacent to my property. I will address the issues at the abandoned property, which I believe to be dangerous and to involve possible future litigation. I prefer to see problems prevented rather than be left to develop. The first issue is a very large swimming pool covered by a material which is sagging and allows water to collect on its surface. The standing water is an invitation to mosquito hatches and a danger to children and animals. The yard and gate containing this pool is broken down and cannot be closed. Other items in the yard also collect water, providing more mosquito hatches. The second issue, excuse me, with the abandoned property is a very old garage built of concrete slabs. The concrete has vertical cracks with lateral displacement up to three inches. A window is bulging out and is also surrounded by deep cracks. The garage is near collapse and is less than six feet from my own garage. I have contacted my homeowner's insurance company as to the apparent problem. I believe these issues are a clear danger to children and others. It also seems to be a problem in the issue of mosquito control. In addition, the abandoned property does not help the value of my property or any other property along Adams Boulevard. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Milconian.
Good evening, everyone. I live at 2116 Adams Boulevard. Uh, I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association and I am here to speak for myself and a few other residents on the block regarding 2100 Adams Boulevard. It's funny, today, the city showed up and apparently inspected the property and put a notice of violations on the front door. And, um, I did read them and it wasn't, uh, very specific. It basically spoke about the pool and about the trash and a few other things. And I don't feel that that notice of violation was as accurate as it should have been. Um, there was a broken window on the third floor where birds are coming in and out. The pool cover, like Wendy said, is sagging and the water of the pool is up to the top. The fence which covers, which goes in and out of the backyard is open, which is very dangerous. Um, stagnant water will create mosquitoes in the next coming weeks. We have dealt with this problem for almost three years. Uh, I have been emailing the inspection department. I don't have copies of those emails, but one time they came out and put a violation notice on the front door. The house has been vacant. Uh, the property owner is now living, um, on Newberry Street. I have visited Newberry Street and taken them their mail, so on and so forth. There's trash on the side of the house, in the backyard, and it has not been taken care of. Um, there's a car in the, in the driveway and the tabs have expired and the car's been sitting there for two years now. Um, let's see. Notice of violations, junk, debris in your yard, unkept lawn, and fence in disrepair. Those are, that's what's noted on the orange, um, violation on the front door. It's a mess. I don't know what else to say. And I've received several complaints and the person next to the home besides Wendy hasn't been able to come here tonight, but the, the grass is six feet tall. Now, that's all I have to say, really. Um, I hope you can look into this and get some resolution before the summer's over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Lee.
Good evening. I'm here today in regards to water bills. Prior to the COVID, y'all allowed, the city and state, y'all made agreement with them to, the tenants to not pay a water bill for two years. Now, my dad didn't agree to this because he is the landlord and, um, he's getting a bill. I feel it's threatening to say that it's gonna be a lien on his property when y'all made the agreement where the tenants didn't have to pay the rent or pay their water for those two years. And I feel this need to be addressed because that's something he didn't agree to. He didn't, y'all didn't call him and ask him, is it all right if we let these people go without paying the water bill for two years? So I don't know, every time I get my water bill, it says, pay the previous month or expect a shut-off. I shouldn't have, he shouldn't have a $1,700 bill because y'all allowed that to go on for that long. I don't know who I need to talk to, but I'm addressing the city first and I'll take it to wherever I need to take it to next because it was an agreement that he, uh, signed up for and this bond act of 1933 has nothing to do with that COVID situation that y'all allowed to happen. So I appreciate y'all listening to me and let me know what I need to do to further this, to take it to the next level if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Jones.
Hi, my name is Tanya Jones and I am the founder here at United Together Lupus Foundation here in Saginaw. This is a new organization. The reason and purpose for me opening up this organization is because I was diagnosed with lupus. It almost took my life and I just had a calling on my life to feel, to share the impact what it can cause, to help someone that they will never experience what I experienced, and to bring the awareness. This is also Lupus Aware National, Lupus Awareness Month, and on May 20th, I will be having a event called The Gift of Hope. I issued out some flyers and our brochure that we have. Um, my building is located at 804 South Hamilton in Old Town Saginaw. And, um, what causes lupus? What causes lupus is when your body, when your chronic, chronic condition of inflammation, it causes pain when the good tissue attacks the bad tissue and it can cause joint, muscle, it can affect your heart, your major organs. It's, uh, effective with people who are of dark color, African-American, Asian, Hispanic, um, uh, just one more, Asian, Hispanic, more than Caucasians. Um, the target age is fourteen, 15 to 44 years of age. It affects women most. Men can also get it, but it affects women the most. I do have information about, um, my donations. Um, you can get, uh, check out my website at utlfoundation.org. I also have a Cash App information and I also have a Facebook for marketing and everyone can check that out. I would like to invite everyone that's up on the panel. You're more than welcome to the event if you would like to come. Tickets are free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Allen.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Charles Allen. Um, I'm from the City of Saginaw, 2003, Alleghen Street. Uh, greetings to the Mayor Potem and the Mayor and the Council. Sorry, I did that backwards, not on purpose, and the City Manager. And for some reason, I'm nervous, but I speak a lot, so I just wanted to kind of start here. Um, and it's just, we must believe that tomorrow can be better than today. We must decide that the failures of the past be put to rest and together looking forward only offers up our best. Each step we take brings us closer to what we become. Each move we make offers truth and understanding. We must lift each other high. All together we will fall. And as long as we are here, we are Saginaw. So when I think about my city, that's the song I think about. I've known it since I was a kid. So I wanted to start there. Um, because we are Saginaw, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm here to cordially invite the Council and all of the city staff to, um, the First Annual Identifying Triggers Mental Health Awareness Rally, happening at the YMCA, um, which is located on Fortney and the Garden. Um, it is a family-friendly event, is a free event. Uh, there will be, uh, one of the things that I find with my mental health is that I have a hard time dealing with my mental health and also dealing with my children, who is my responsibility. So we made sure that you can put your kids at the bouncy house and they can get their face painted, they can color and have a good time. And again, this is completely free. Um, there is a number on the flyer, guys. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact me personally. International recording artist, uh, Cherie Williams, who is from Saginaw, Michigan, is bringing her full band and performing there. Um, I'm really excited to have her. Also, Brian Pruitt, um, Power Dad Organization, he's gonna be one of our keynote speakers that day. And also the Director of Michigan United, Ken Warwick, will be there as well, speaking. And also Elisa Ortega Medina will be there as our yoga, yoga therapy speaker. And also, we're offering yoga therapy that day in combat zones for people who suffer with mental health. This is something that is very important to me, that you have connection to care, that you have some, um, learned some new tools that might help you on your day-to-day basis with mental health and, um, that your life is changed that day. So have a great day. Thank you so much for the time. I love the City of Saginaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Larry Rodarte.
Good evening, everybody in the room, the audience as well as the dignitaries. And, uh, I was told, how am I gonna follow that? But I am Larry Rodarte and I am, uh, here tonight representing the Union Civica Mexicana and I am the chairperson of the 44th Annual Cinco de Mayo that we just had this weekend. And we have such a vibrant community and what took place this weekend was really beautiful because not only for the Hispanic people, but for the whole community. I saw all walks on the parade route and I saw, uh, you know, a very happy community that was blessed with some beautiful weather that day, but also, you know, to, to see uh, young kids like the Dancing Divas that were out there and they got the most cheers that I saw of, of the entrance, which was over a hundred entrants, believe it or not. And, um, it just was really awesome. And the reason that I'm here today is because I want to bring attention to the fact that the Union Civica Mexicana is the presenting organization. And the reason why it was formed almost 80 years ago was because, one, they wanted to fight for the civil rights of the Mexican people that had came from Mexico and were migrant workers, as well as from Texas, to fight discrimination. Two was for educational attainment for their children, to, to help them to succeed in the public schools. And three, and this is the one that's most important that pertains to the Cinco de Mayo, is the idea to help, uh, to help bring forth the celebration of our heritage and our culture and not lose that with our young people as well as the community at large as the Mexican people were assimilating here in Saginaw. So I think the founders, 78 years ago today, would be quite happy with the Union Civica Mexicana today because we really showed our culture and heritage and we were shining Saturday. And what was really nice was that people from Flint, from Bay City, I even had people from Texas there, that they see Saginaw, they're looking at Saginaw. And I know this because some are trying to emulate what we're doing here in Saginaw with our Cinco de Mayo as well as other celebrations. So I hope that with how we presented ourselves, that we will all try to be ambassadors of this city because that's what we need and we need to really celebrate the culture and the diversity. And I know that in the, almost 15 years that I have been involved with the civica with this Cinco de Mayo, there have been roadblocks. And I asked the City of Saginaw to please, let's try to work together a little better so that they, we don't have the roadblocks, so that we can continue with these types of celebrations and that we, as an organization, do not give up on the City of Saginaw. So to the citizens of Saginaw and everybody in this room, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing the support that you did that lifted up our organization because we were so happy and jubilant with the Cinco de Mayo this year. Thank you very much. Muchisimas gracias.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Jennifer Tanny.
Everyone, um, mostly I want to echo a lot of what Larry just said. Um, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody, um, who attended our event this weekend and if you weren't able to make it, all of you that are sitting here on this council, most of you were there and participated. Um, it was a huge success and when I say a huge success, like I'm a numbers person, so I know Larry just mentioned that we had over a hundred entries, but each of those entries had 10 or more people, some of them had 20 or 30 walkers. We had over a thousand people in Hoyt Park lined up to celebrate the Cinco de Mayo and then when you think about, there were thousands more waiting to see what we had put together. Um, it was a beautiful day, a lot of fun was had. Um, our culture had the spotlight in the city that day and, um, it just brought so much pride to my heart to see that. Um, the thank you specifically, I wanted to thank, um, Morley, there are volunteers from Morley, if you were there that day, they were just so energetic and so positive and so helpful. They really helped start us off on the right foot. Um, their volunteers were Kalia and Jaden Jones, Jenny Crowell, Olympia Gully, Joaquina Barsonal, um, Barsinus, Victor Neelis, um, and then also some civica members that we have, Ruth Guevara, myself, Valerie Blanco, Angela Blanco, Larry Rodarte, Libby McAlu, also Alex Guevara, Malik Vasquez, Matt Wiesner, Josh Stevens, Amy and Ella Morales. Um, also Stars, they shuttled our participants and volunteers down from the city lots all the way down to the parade line for us, uh, the lineup. And then at the end of the parade, they also shuttled everybody back to their cars that day. And that was so key for us to be a good community partner, to partner better with the Saginaw Children's Zoo, uh, so that we could avoid parking in their parking lots and not impede on their business. And that was kind of a little bit of a landmine that we really wanted to avoid and we were only able to do that because of Stars and because of some golf carts we were able to obtain for the day, so huge thank you to Stars. Uh, Gail's out of Bridgeport, they donated trash bags and gloves. We did a huge pickup of Hoyt Park immediately after the parade, so big thank you to Gail's. Also, Bridgeport Parks and Rec donated, um, some safety vests for all of our volunteers and so that was key also. Um, our judges, Alexis Thomas, Kathleen Chantaca, and the rest of our committee. Um, but last but not least, the City of Saginaw and all of you. Uh, behind the scenes, leading up to an event of that scale was kind of rough. Um, it was my first year coordinating the event, but I think that it went well. Um, I, I just wanted to say again, thank you for helping support us in, um, communicating around that, for your participation, specifically to Phil Karwatt. Uh, he took the time out last minute to make some changes that I know was very difficult for him to do.
I'll extend the speaker's time by 45 seconds.
Need a second.
Second.
Just been moved to second. All those in favor, say a "a" by saying "a". All those opposed, "n".
Thank you. Um, but, Jennifer, I need to reset the timer. Okay. So I'll just close with saying specifically Phil Karwatt and his staff, they met with us, um, in the couple of weeks prior to the event and were able to do some super important changes to our parade route that was critical in, in us being good community partners and having a successful event that day. Um, and I'm looking forward to next year and I hope that we can improve on our communication and make it even better and go even smoother next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next order of business is council remarks.
Council members, you have three, three minutes as well. No extended time. Now, Councilwoman Sylvia, three, three minutes will begin tonight with Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you to all our speakers who came out this evening. Um, I am glad to have our fellow council member, uh, Councilman Balls, back with us and that's all I have.
Thank you. The man of the hour, Councilman Balls.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank all my council people in the city for sending a card and all the staff. During my time I was down, uh, you know, you get older and, and things happen. Uh, I had, uh, cancer and they got rid of it, thank God.
Amen.
When they say that word "see" in your household, you know, it seem like everything get kind of ruckus, so I, I gotta go home and, and, uh, thank my wife for putting up with me.
Yes, Lord.
Every day.
Yes, Lord.
Because it gets kind of rough, you know? I'm, I'm the kind of guy that like to stay moving and, and doing. I'm the kind of guy that like to stay moving and doing things and out in the community. And I've been in the Big Brothers program, I didn't see my little brother in two months. And then COVID before that, well, I say my little brother, but the guy is now, he's 6'4", he weighs like 300 pounds, wearing size 15 to 16 shoes. So, he ain't really my little brother no more. You know, I haven't seen him either. So, I'm just thankful for God that I'm back, and I'm looking forward to continuing to doing the work that I do in the community, you know, for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor, yeah. And I will reiterate what everybody's saying, welcome back, sir. So, it's been about three weeks since we've been here. This is one of those times where we have a little extra, we have an extra week that falls during the year. So, we and I had the opportunity to go to Lansing and attend the Capcom conference that was down there. It's always a great experience because you get to talk to your legislators, they're all there, there's a lot of information that MML is bringing forth. So, again, a lot of conversations around housing and zoning, was able to bring back some stuff that I provided to our staff as well. So, thank you for that opportunity because that does come from the citizens of the city sending us off to these conferences to be better council members. I do have a couple of things here, Mayor. I also want to talk about Officer Jonathan Bearline, congratulations, friend as well, Officer of the Year. And also to Brittany Juffers, she works in our Victim Services Division, so she is Profession Staff of the Year, and both of these two folks really deserve that award. And thanks, Brittany, for all the stuff that you're doing with our front porch roll calls, information that you provide to the city residents. Yes, thank you for everybody coming out from Cinco de Mayo, was just off the hook this year. I couldn't believe the people that came out for that parade. I kept wondering how much longer, I hope I have enough candy. I did run out when I got down to downtown, but I mean, it was just awesome event. Thank you for everything that you guys did to put that on too. So, and then also afterwards, the festivities, and I ended up getting down to the MAC Center, which I finally had rolled ice cream, if you've never had it, try it, it's really good. Also, too, Debbie Myconian, thank you for your invitation to come to your Neighborhood Association and talk about the tax cap. Thank you Lori Brown for graciously going with me and having that conversation with our residents. And it wasn't just your neighborhood either, too, there was other neighborhoods that came. This is a topic that people, they want to talk about. And also, since we were here last, had the opportunity to stop into Saginaw Soup. It was pretty packed, but again, Cassie, to all your folks, and that, it was a great event, I could see, and so thanks for that. Thanks for putting it on for our residents because it's young entrepreneurs that are pitching their little, their Shark Tank ideas for some cash, so. Since last here, too, staff, amazing job for the roof replacement program. We were here for two Saturdays, weather on one of them, thank you, Mayor. Mayor came out, got everybody in the building because we were getting phone calls as the rain was coming down. But it was just incredible to see the need that was here in Saginaw. It was just great to talk to everybody and just, again, this is a great program that we have put together for them. So, good luck to everybody that applied. I'm just, off the top of my head, I'm like, way over 400 applications that were taken in that time period. So, oh, Monique, too, I forgot, you were there for the second weekend, so, yeah, it was quite an event. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Just wanted to give you an update, I did go to my first Capital Con, and it was really nice. And thanks for, Ms. Monique, for showing me the ropes around and me messaging pro-mayor bench, like, what time do I need to be here? And just wanted to make sure that I was there, and I actually ran into one of my cousins who's on the Midland Council. So, it was kind of neat, you know? He forgot who I was, but I had to bring him back. So, yeah, I just wanted to say it was a busy weekend for my Latino community, which I'm so proud to be able to represent. And of course, Larry, he did an excellent job, as always, he always comes through for our Latino community, so it's always great. We participated in the parade, so I thank those of you who were able to come on the council with me, but I think people didn't know, so we're going to try to get banners so that way they know who we are. I kind of think they do, but, yeah, so, yeah, I had fun, I threw out little teddy bears, which was a big hit, toys, I seen, instead of just candy, you know? So, a lot of the little kids were just picking them up and hugging them, and it just made my heart melt, just to be able to experience that, you know, giving back to my community. And for the little ones, because not all of them should be eating candy, so the little toys were a big hit, you know? And also, I went to Miguel Caillenda Friday night and was able to give a speech there talking about, you know, getting our young population to vote, it's very important. And then also, I got to speak Saturday at the MAC Center in regards to our Latino community and what the MAC Center is about and what they're trying to do. That was our first annual, so it was really nice. I'm just trying to spread the love, wherever they need me, I go. And I just want to say Feliz Dia de los Madres, which is Feliz Mother's, Happy Mother's Day. So, this would be my first Mother's Day as a grandma, which I still don't feel like it, but Happy Mother's Day to all you strong, powerful women that will be celebrating with your loved ones and those who have passed on. You know, I know everybody doesn't make it to get to spend with their loved ones, but, yeah, so that's special. And then, real quick, opening day, May 24, Downtown Farmer's Market. I used to work for Amish U Extension, so it's very important to get your fruits and vegetables, you're my plate, the five, three out of the five of them. So, that'll be opening 10 to 3, so I look forward to going down there and getting some fresh fruit and vegetables to throw on the grill, make some good chila and fajitas. I mean, I hope I can not making you guys hungry, but, yeah, so, thank you and enjoy the rest of your night. And thank you, Mr. Allen, for the song, I don't know, you've kind of topped it, I got my microphone, but, I don't know if I can sing like you, but, we might have to record something together. I'm not that good, but we could try. All right, have a good night, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome back, Councilman Balls, it's great to have you back with us. We feel whole now, I feel. And then, like Councilwoman Garcia was saying, we didn't have a sign, so we were at, on Mike's Rutgers truck, and so when we were passing through, everyone's like, "Thanks, Mike's, thanks, Mike's." And Councilman Oster, she's like, "It's, uh, thank you from Saginaw City Council." So, yeah, we got to work on a sign. But it was great to, it was a great, great event. And when I was on the truck, I was thinking about, like, how amazing our community is. And although it's not going to make, you know, national headlines, everybody in Saginaw had a great day together. It was, it was an amazing, amazing event. So, thank you Larry and Jennifer for putting that on, thank you Phil for making it a straight line. I was waiting for us to turn, but we never did, so that was a surprise to me. And then, yeah, we had a great time at the Capital Con, MMA, MML, I'm sorry. That's it for me, thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you to our public speakers, thank you to those who are watching online. I do want to say thank you to Charles, I was going to sing my Mother's Day song today, but I'm going to leave that for next year, all right? We did have a great job at Capital Con, getting a chance to meet other colleagues, and just having lunch with some additional leaders, and just have conversations about what other cities are doing with ARPA, and where we have grown, and some great opportunities, so that was great. I do want to say congratulations to all of our Saginaw City College graduates. Even up until today, I saw one of the pastors, their son now has a doctorate in biochemistry right here in the city of Saginaw, Pastor Baldwin's son, and a lot of students graduating from SBSU, Delta, Central, come on back home, all right? I'm just going to say that we're making way for you, and we're ready for you to come on home. Oh, and we've already talked about Cinco de Mayo, that has been an amazing time, going to the Jalt Center and seeing the dancers. Me and my boys, we had a good time seeing those dancers, I can't move like that, but I would love to do that, it was a great opportunity. And then, going to the MAC Center and getting that rolled ice cream, I was so happy about that. And Teo's, I think is his name, but it was really good, and they had slushes. It was just a really great weekend. I mean, I ate until I was full, so, it was a great weekend of eating. So, in celebration, I'm thankful for our proclamation for mental health. March, May 27 at 4:00 PM, there will be a play at the Temple Theater called The Family Car that focuses on mental health. I was actually able to be interviewed about my recent mental health diagnosis that I was diagnosed with this year. So, I encourage you all, take this month serious, if you have questions, step out, ask questions, get tested. If you don't know anyone, we have great medical facilities here in the community, there are resources available for you. Mental health, it's very important, and please take it serious. And then, finally, I do want to say, great shout out to Saginaw Soup, just getting there and seeing those residents scream over that money and celebrate, I felt like I was on TV. It was a great, and I was just here in the city of Saginaw, just proclaiming what we're doing for our community. That is what I will leave off on, there is hope, there is great things continuing to go on in the city of Saginaw, it's summertime, keep on checking on your neighbors. And once again, thank you to our public and our citizens that continue to think of us. And thank you to Ms. Jones, I do want to clarify, and I'll get with you later about, you said free, but I saw a $50 ticket, so I think you, if you were saying it's free for us, but still buy those $50 tickets, all right? I wanted to make that clear. Before all the Saginaw shows up for a free event. I appreciate you for that, that is all.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Oh, thank you so much, Mayor. Don't start about three minutes yet, okay? Anyway, thank you, citizens, so much, everyone that came to City Council this evening, the young lady with the Lupus Foundation, if you're here after council, I'd definitely like to speak with you. I do have done a lot of research on lupus, so I know a little bit about lupus, family members, et cetera. So happy in regards to the mental health awareness on the 20th also. And I know both of these events are on the same day, but they are at different times, so we can go to both of those, and I encourage you to do so. And identifying triggers, a lot of people go undiagnosed for so long, so I'm so happy that you guys are putting that on. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to Enterprise, Bay Road in Saginaw, Enterprise Rental Car, awesome people over there, Ben and Terry, just, it's awesome. When you see changes in a particular entity, you can tell it. And when people treat you right, you want to go back, you know? There's nothing but to go in there and say hello. Also, I went to Prom in the City, and it was awesome, awesome. Every year, it's awesome, that young lady has done a phenomenal job with that event and for special needs. And it's not just for special needs, it's for anyone, you know? And some of the prom participants were like, I know, like 60 years old, but it was so, so awesome. And I think we ought to get behind that as a city, we really do. And I was honored, yours truly, at the event, along with several other people. And that's all I have for today, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And welcome back, Councilman Balls.
Next, we have Council, ma'am, sorry, Mayor Protem, Mitch.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. Of course, Michael, we're so glad to have you back and that you are well, so glad to have you back. But to our public speakers, thank you so much for being here tonight, thank you for bringing your concerns, Ms. Melconian, Ms. Sonier. We'll have to defer to staff on this one, of course, but I do want to acknowledge your issues because we've heard from you guys multiple times and multiple people from the neighborhood over this house, and I imagine staff is frustrated with the situation, but not nearly as frustrated as you guys are. So, I empathize with your plight, and I'm sorry that it hasn't been resolved yet. To Ms. Jones, thank you for being here, and thank you for extending the invitation to us. I know a few people who are, who suffer from lupus, and until you said it tonight, it didn't dawn on me that they are all exclusively women that I know who have it. And it can be debilitating in varying degrees, and it's certainly something that we need to call attention to and help people to understand and find ways to support research and things like that, because it's, I've seen the suffering it causes, and it's not something I'd wish on anybody ever. Mr. Allen, thank you so much. It was wonderful to hear you sing, any day that we get to hear you sing is a day that has been improved upon. And I want to thank you for putting this event together, I know how much work you've put into putting this event together, and I'm looking forward to speaking. It's fitting that it's called identifying triggers, because one of my triggers is public speaking, because I have generalized anxiety disorder, and so I will have a panic attack and go talk about that in two weeks. So, I appreciate the invitation and being able to be there. To Mr. Rodarte and Ms. Tanny, you guys did a fantastic job, as always. I thought last year's parade was the best attended parade I'd seen in years, and then I saw this crowd this year, and it was even more people out there this year. But thank you for everything you guys do at the La Union Civica, big thanks to the MAC and Caillenda, the events that we had this weekend, I mean, there was something for everybody, you know, families, if you wanted to, you know, party and dance a little bit later into the night, there was stuff like that. And it was just wonderful, it was a wonderful time, and I was so glad to be a part of the parade. And I wanted to thank Mike's Rucker, as Councilman Flores said, we were mistaken for Mike's Rucker because we had some beautiful flowers that a few of us worked for a couple hours to put together, but it didn't occur to us that we didn't have a council sign on the side. So, but I want to thank Mike's Rucker because they very generously spent their time that day carting us around and letting us participate. And one further, we had a lady who was stuck in the mud, and I called Mike's Rucker, not knowing what to do, because we're on the float, as she's like crying out for help. And he had a truck out there to pull her out of the mud without even hesitation, so I just wanted to thank everybody for being so wonderful.
Last but not least, that's a good thing. I too went to the Capcom Center, I am now the president of Michigan, Michigan Municipal League, Black Caucus, Michigan Black Caucus, and that's all of the state, the cities in the state of Michigan. It's not just the Black Caucus, it is a people caucus, okay? It started off with a name, and we've grown it into people. It's not about your color, it's about us all working together, being unified. I also got nominated at the council, at the conference for the women's. We have a women's group that teaches women how to be like our city manager, be managers. I haven't been to that group because I don't want to be a manager, that's too much work. And so, I also got appointed to that board as a member at lodge. And the reason for a member at lodge was because I couldn't run for president, because I got to deal with my own city, and that takes up a lot of energy. I had the opportunity to go to the memorial for the workers that Ms. Miller put on with the union, it was phenomenal. We had, we had a gentleman who played taps, and we laughed, I laughed and joked about it, but, you know, it was like, he go play real taps? And he actually did, he played real taps. This week, I didn't go to Cinco de Mayo, but I had family, I had a family emergency, and I felt bad, and I really don't like to miss. So, I need for the group to know that I didn't just skip out. I had a family crisis, and for once in my life, I put family first. And so, Mr. Rodarte, Jennifer, I know it was the bomb, because I heard about it, and I did get a chance to slide in and get some food, that's all I wanted, was to eat. And so, we talk about it, but we don't need to talk about it anymore. It is a new season, it is a new day. Look around you, the city is growing, we're learning how to love one another. How hard was that? We're now at the point, at the pivot point of this city, of being a real city. Next, May 21st, it's going to show, we should show the world. They called us Sag nasty, they called us the most vicious town to come and live in, but who is hosting the British Cup? Saginaw. So, if nothing else, I need you all to get in here with me, because we going to clean our city up. Thank you so much. Madam Clark.
We are now at the reports from the manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we have two presentations this evening, and just, I wanted to update you on a couple items first, and also, welcome back to Councilman Balls, glad to have him back and healthy. The first update, I mentioned at the last meeting, the Henry G. Marsh mural project, and this is something that we had a presentation, I think, probably pre-COVID by the Convention of Visitors Bureau, and it went, it went away, I think some of the funding wasn't available, and it's moving forward now, and it's a big catalyst for that, is the Memorial Cup. So, we have a good commitment by the county and the Convention of Visitors Bureau and the MEDC. So we have a, a good commitment by the county and the C- the Convention of Visitors Bureau and the MEDC and, uh, some other state agencies. We're working with MDOT and, uh, our Public Services Division are all working together on this. And on May first, there was an announcement of the, uh, project and the selection of the artist. Artist is Stephen Hargash. Uh, he's from this area. He's done a lot of work up here. So you can, uh, look up his murals and look up his website and see what he's done. He has a really, uh, nice mural plan put together for Mr. Marsh, uh, Mayor Marsh. And they, he will be, I think, adding a few things to that, so we'll be finalizing that. The mayor is on the committee and I am in, uh, several other people. So, um, I think you'll see him start to work probably in the next month or so on that. And, uh, plan is to be done by the end of summer, so that'll be a great addition to that area. And there will be, uh, lighting added and some other things going on right there as well. Uh, the roof portion of the ARPA home rehab program, I want to thank, uh, Yolanda Bland and her staff for working on those two Saturdays and also the, um, week in between, they were working with people to take applications. And I think they were here probably from about seven thirty in the morning till about seven in the evening, at least on the first weekend. Um, they actually took, um, over six hundred and twenty-nine applications for roofs during that time. Three hundred the first Saturday and, and I think about eighty over the week and then another few hundred, uh, the next Saturday. The, uh, police award ceremony is this week, uh, Wednesday at eleven AM in the, uh, Saginaw Police Department Lobby. Chief Ruth will present annual awards, including Officer of the Year. And I believe he's also, um, honoring the retirees and also swearing in new officers this year. And finally, I do also want to, uh, give a thank you to Yolanda again and her staff and all the department heads and, uh, division heads for completing the annual budget. It takes several months to work through, to balance it and to prepare it. And Yolanda and her staff and the city department and division heads worked hard, uh, to balance this and, uh, provide it for council consider- considerations. So she'll be presenting that tonight. But first, we do have an update on the Saginaw Neighborhood Recognition Awards Program by Alex Shepard, who's one of our code enforcement inspectors. This program's been, uh, going for, uh, the past few years and they wanted to provide an update and, and give more information on, on the project. So Alex.
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, City Council for being here. Glad to have you back, Mr. Valls.
Thank you.
I understand cancer is difficult. I've just lost two members of my family to it, so I'm glad to hear about your recovery. May it stay away from you and, and, and also I hate public speaking, so please send me your, your blessing or whatever energy carries you through these to carry me through this as I, uh, go over the Saginaw Neighborhood Recognition Award. Um, there are some bad lots in the city. There's definitely plenty of them. But once in a while, we like to award people for doing the right thing, which is taking good care of their lawns in the city of Saginaw. So Scott Nazinski, about five or six years ago, started this program called the Saginaw Neighborhood Recognition Award. And that is where we do send out letters to people who are recognized as having a very well-kept lawn. We have been doing this for four years now. I think there was something in here for me to use and let's see if I can do it right. Hey, so back in two thousand eighteen when the program started, there was, you know, only a few nominees. And this map just kind of goes over how it has expanded over the years. So, you know, the first year we had maybe about fifty nominees. Second year, I started working at the city, so I learned about it and went out to about a hundred nominees. Then in two thousand twenty-one, we had about two hundred and fifty. Now we're up to three hundred, almost four hundred people being nominated. And it's a great thing. People seem to be resonating with it very positively. Lots of people calling and thinking, hey, what is this? I, I've never been thanked by the city before. And they're really acting positively about it. And it's nice getting out there and meeting with these citizens. Um, it's, it's been a very positive thing for those people. And we've had lots of people who never thought they'd be recognized for something like this, receiving these rewards and being so happy about it. I mean, they, they're very nice. When we show up to give them their awards, they're even offering a feeta, steaks, like, come on in. Would you like a beer? It's like, no, I'm working, but I appreciate it. Maybe I'll be here after. So i- it's been a very wonderful program to, uh, be a part of. I know Scott Nazinski has retired. He's still working here. I don't know if we'll ever get rid of him, but in case we do, um, I myself will be taking over as well as Scott Thomas, who is not able to be here. Uh, handing out the awards, making sure things are going forward, making sure we keep the signage. And, uh, making sure we keep appreciating people taking care of their yards as best they can. Um, I do have some handouts. I don't know if I can approach the bench.
I, I'll handle them.
All right.
Better to be safe than sorry.
But I look forward to seeing you for the cleanup this weekend, uh, for all that can make it. It's gonna be a wonderful little event. We've been doing this for a few years now and it's just nice. It makes you feel better and it does clean up the neighborhood, make it Saginaw more presentable place. You know, we've got enough bad things going on, so this program is really about recognizing some of the good going on in this. Thank you for your time. Uh, anything I'm missing, I don't have anyone to look to, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm gonna rag for me. I gotta wipe this sweat off. But, uh, thank you very much.
I think we have a question.
Yeah.
Yes.
I noticed this store in the city of Saginaw, it's leaning, the whole building is leaning. And I don't use the building leaning, the door, the front door on it won't even close right. It's a gap about this big. Where I'm sure animals are running in and out of it. But I've seen somebody post it. And, uh, it's just amazing to me to know that that's still happening. Do you guys, uh, drive by those stores and see if they have violations anywhere?
I think I know what store you're talking about. Um, we've watched it because we've worried about arson over the years. Um, I don't know if it's, if it's the one that I'm thinking of, it is land bank and we are in the process of trying to get it torn down. So hopefully we won't have to worry about that for much longer.
The active store, they're open.
Say what?
They're open. The store is open.
Oh, the store is open. Is it Bill's Party Store?
No, it's right behind the Rick's Auto Zone Place, Auto Muffler Place or something like that.
Hollywood or something?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that one. Um, if you-
You know now.
I, I do now. But me going in, saying some vague address that I haven't heard before to the people that, uh, put this in, won't help. If you could get an address for me, I'll be happy to take this in and get a complaint started and then we can get some, uh, something started on that. Because what we do is we, if it is deemed a dangerous building, we can go out to the owners and make sure that they stabilize it and or do whatever's necessary to ensure the s- safety and stability of that building. Um, and I, and if it's in a historic district, there will be some difficulty there. I know that we have some, some, it's more difficult in those cases, like the one that was falling into Genesee, but we will do what we can to make sure that that gets taken care of to maintain safety and stability.
So we have any complaints, we can send them to the city manager, send them to you?
You send them to the city manager or you can call Camisha Felicia who work in the front of the inspections Department. They're very friendly and love taking these calls and then they refer to us. And I, I mean that. I, I do, that's not sarcasm or anything. They, they're very friendly people. And they do appreciate getting these calls because they want to see the city get better as well, you know? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
What do they win?
Oh, you'll have to take care of your lawn and you can find out.
I'm gonna try to get people to nominate you, that's why I'm here. All about the prize.
There's a little bucket of goods.
Gift card eater since?
There's gift cards, there's tools, lawn bags, and depending on who we can get in the city to sponsor. Because we'll go to local businesses and ask what they can hand in. I know a few years in a row, we got Tim Horton's gift cards and then the, uh, little hardware store that keeps changing names will give us-
I just know people like incentives and maybe for the marketing purposes, you might have put something down, you might motivate maybe the younger generation.
Yeah. No, no brand new car or anything like that, but there are some really nice little prizes.
Maybe gas cars or something, yeah.
We, and I am looking to get out and, and talk to more potential sponsors of it. Scott has stuck with his few businesses, but I'm gonna try to ask everybody, why not bother as many people as we can to see if we can get stuff and gas cards should hopefully be involved in that too.
Well, let me know. I'd be happy to help you. I'm good at marketing.
Please do.
We'll get the player prices.
So I have a question. When it comes to who can enter, who can enter? Is it any, all, what?
Uh, anybody. You can nominate your neighbor, you can nominate even somebody that you hate. You can nominate anybody that owns a property in the city. So long as they're taking good care of their lawn, they can be nominated. And then what happens is people from the city will drive out a firm that is a nice house. And if it is one of the nicer ones in the quadrant, because we do run on a quadrant system for this award, they'll get run in to be one of the twelve at the end of the season to potentially win. And the twelve will get awards, but there's one grand prize winner. Out of all those twelve that are nominated as the tops in that area.
Follow up question to that. Um, the eligibility, are city employees? Because I have a fire chief that lives down the block from me who is a lawn fanatic and-
Can't imagine who that is.
Are we allowed to nominate city employees at all?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can absolutely nominate anybody. You can even nominate yourself, so, you know.
How many votes do you need?
How many what?
How many votes do you need?
Um, it doesn't go by votes because it, it's not a popularity contest. It really is determined by whether or not I like your lawn. Or city employees. And that's what I say, like, city employees will go out there and then judge it. I'm only one vote though, okay? But I am, you know, I'm, I'm willing to be incentivized. Is that a legal statement? There we go, I'll, I'll be there.
We'll talk after.
We were talking about fajitas earlier, so, yeah, you can, you can win my votes really easy.
You are not scared of a mic.
Is this on?
Yeah, we better move on to, to the budget now.
We, can we scratch some of this from the record?
Councilor Copeland had a question.
No, my question is just, please just make sure he makes more presentations.
Yes.
We'll see if I'm willing to. I'm drenched in sweat right now. I'm not public speaking at all. This is my way to get through it, so I'm glad you're enjoying it. I'm terrified, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you for having me. Any other questions? And then I'll be happy to talk, oh, they're gone.
No, they don't ask questions.
Okay. Well, I was, I was gonna talk to them in the hallway, Wendy and, and-
Take the kids to the hallway.
Okay, I'm going.
Okay. All right, uh, now we have, uh, Ms. Bland is going to present the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay, so I'm not gonna do any dancing, singing. It's not gonna happen. Welcome back, Councilwoman Valls. Nice to see you. Okay, so we're kind of probably gonna move something a little bit more drier, so we'll just kind of move in that direction. So today I'm here to present to you the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. Um, you actually received this back on, um, April twenty-fourth electronically. And we've had a couple, uh, presentations sent to you since then. So first of all, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council and City Manager Morales. Tonight I will give you a quick overview, like, this is a hundred thousand mile view of the budget. Because all the information has been presented and, uh, lengthy presentation was provided, uh, last Thursday. Um, and then, uh, review with you the budget schedule. Tonight, uh, with me is John Baker. He's our Budget Analyst One. So opportunities to review the budget, um, again, is online at www.saginaw-mi.com. Um, tonight is the first, uh, discussion of the budget. Uh, we will be having a public hearing on, um, Monday the twenty-second. Um, we're hoping for adoption on Monday the twenty-second. Um, email or citizen, citizen comments can be directed to myself at nine eight nine seven five nine one seven eight four. Or you can email me at ybland@saginaw-mi.com. So what the proposed, uh, twenty-four budget, uh, continues to reflect is our commitment to provide quality services to our residents while preserving our long-term financial stability. Um, if you want to look at a quick overview of the budget, because I know that it's quite lengthy, please review the budget overview section that's located on page forty-two to sixty-three. And that will give you a breakdown from revenues, expenditures, expenditures by category and summary of positions. The total citywide budget is projected to be a hundred and seventy-eight point two-three million. And this represents roughly a forty-four million dollar increase or a thirty-three percent increase from the previous year. The largest increases will be realized in three funds. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund will increase twenty-two million as the city council approved the allocation of the ARPA funds in January of twenty twenty-three. Uh, funds were also carried over from the previous fiscal year, or the current fiscal year. The op- the water operation and maintenance funds increased ten point seven-five million or roughly twenty-eight percent as the Department of Water and Wastewater Services has budgeted for the elevated, uh, storage tank project as well as the lead and galvanizing line replacement project. And the third fund that will increase-
That was quick. Any questions, Mary?
Okay. See, we're in the right spot. Okay. See, I didn't leave any joke there, right? Technology joke, okay. Um, the sewer operation and maintenance fund is the third, uh, fund that increases about thirty-four percent or eight point one-five million. And this increase is directly related to the river crossing projects and the Hancock C O- so, C S O Basin, um, repairs at one hundred North Hamilton Street. Uh, another thing that to point out is during fiscal year twenty-three, the management team conducted an internal review of positions citywide. And as part of the review, the team considered succession planning, um, the organizational structure as well as positions that the city has not been able to fill. As, um, as such, for fiscal year twenty-four budget, um, we added some positions due to succession planning as well as provide, as well as provided some salary adjustments, um, where needed. And that can be, uh, found, a lot of the information that will be discussed about that change is in the larger presentation. For fiscal year twenty-four budget, which reflects the change to salaries for the employees, um, minus, uh, command, received their, uh, collective bargaining agreement, uh, increases for the year. There was also increase to technical services IS because, um, this is a result of the city moving towards a cloud-based platform. And the city has also, uh, realized increase in the self-insurance fund as well as the workers' compensation fund due to increases in the national, uh, rates nationwide. Wanted to show this picture here, um, to show you the historical trend. As you can see each year, not only the general fund it has increased, but the citywide budget has increased. Um, as we start spinning down the ARPA funds, you will see a decrease in subsequent years. So, um, as part of the city manager letter, we discussed some of the challenges that the city faces. The first challenge that we continue to talk about and have, uh, faced is the water and sewer lead and galvanizing line replacement. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget, it continues to address the funding in both water and sewer operations for the replacement of lead and galvanizing lines. This is a challenging project, but the city will continue to evaluate the water and wastewater infrastructure and adjust these issues proactively. Um, other post-employment benefits and pension liabilities continue to be an issue. And as previously stated, funding for the OPEB and pension liabilities remain a major concern for the city. The budget continues to address funding of these liabilities. For fiscal year twenty-four budget, um, we've allocated funds towards both obligations through proactive management and the city implementing the Medicare Advantage programs to assist us with the managing the retiree healthcare obligations. You will see a decrease in retiree healthcare, uh, in twenty twenty-four. And as I, I stated previous, in previous budget presentations, that during fiscal year twenty-two, the city re-amortized all the pension assets, which resulted in the stabilization of our pension portfolio and leveling of the assets to an annual amount of nineteen million dollars for the next twenty-five years. The fiscal year twenty-four budget reflects the implementation of this change and is budgeted at nineteen million. Um, American Rescue Plan Funds, that was a challenge. The city administration with city council and the ARPA Advisory Committee, uh, committed a great deal of fiscal year twenty-three to work through the process of allocating these funds to silly, to city councils, ARPA goals and objectives, which were youth and family, neighborhood preservation and beautification, health, health initiatives, economic development and housing. And for fiscal year twenty-four, the city will continue to review the allocations of any remaining funds to invest in the programs, services and infrastructures that will be, make the biggest impact to the quality- to the quality of life for the Saginaw residents. So let's look at this from a fund type, uh, review. The breakdown of the total hundred and seventy-eight point two three million is represented in this pie chart. General Fund rough, uh, represents roughly twenty-three percent of the total citywide budget. And the general fund is your largest discretionary fund. Special Revenue Funds represents roughly, uh, twenty-six and a half of the total citywide budget. Um, the largest part of the budget is represented in your enterprise funds, which consists of your boat launch fund, your sewer and water operation and maintenance funds at about roughly forty-six million or forty-six percent of the total, uh, budget. Your Internal Service Fund represents roughly five of the total budget. And then your fiduciary fund represents less than point zero two percent. Starting with the general fund, again, the total, um, account, uh, this fund accounts for roughly twenty-three percent of your total citywide budget. And as you can see, it makes up of various departments. So for fiscal year twenty-four, the projected budget for the general fund is forty point two seven million. This represents an increase of one point five or roughly four percent from the previous year's budget. The largest general increase to the fund, and like I say, general, these are items that are, you're gonna see in each of the different areas, is there's increase to salaries due to the collective bargaining agreement that were settled in fiscal year twenty-three. Increase to the general liability insurance and workers' compensation insurance due to current national, um, market conditions. Increases to, um, information management charges as the city moves forward to a cloud-based platform. And then you're seeing increases to fuel as well as utilities. Now, we're, we're looking specifically at the general fund departments. The Office of General Governments will increase slightly. Um, and this increase will be realized in training and development for HR as well as for advertising for the elections. The Department of Fiscal Services will, uh, they're planning on purchasing software for income tax. So that was a slight increase to their budget. Turning the page. Um, Community Public Safety Police in, uh, include increases for professional services for victim services, uh, fuel. Then they're also including accreditation services, recognize, they also recognize two hundred thousand dollars for the Byron Justice grant from the, uh, Office of Sabanaw. You also will see that on the revenue side, a two hundred thousand dollar grant, um, to offset this. And the purchase of vehicles through the Ford Municipal Buyback Program. We also added two additional police officers to this department. Community Public Safety Fire will, um, see increases for the record management software, motor, uh, vehicle supplies. And then these costs will be partially offset, um, due to a reduction in their installment contract. So they're in the process of paying off their installment contract, so we saw that slight decrease. The Office of Neighborhood Services and Inspection includes increases to professional services to provide assistance with neighborhood planning activities, updating the planning and zoning ordinance, and, uh, continued contracted services for plumbing and the mechan, uh, plumbing and mechanical services. We also see an increase to our emergency demolition costs. Um, we, uh, because we're planning, um, the department's planning on doing more neighborhood activities and working on updating the planning and zoning ordinance, a pla, uh, planning intern has been added to the complement. Uh, in the Department of Public Services, funds are required for vehicle purchases for the Ford Municipal Buyback Program. And then again, this is offset by revenues. Um, as I previously mentioned to you, is that, um, what we're seeing a decrease in is in our other general fund expenditures for retiree healthcare as we did move towards a Medicare Advantage Program. This reduction in this appropriation center will, uh, be offset by increases to operating transfers out of the general fund as well as paying for the Saginaw County Drain Assessment. And we've, this is our, our second year of paying for that. So the next fund type we're gonna discuss is your special revenue funds. And these funds account for proceeds from specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for a specific purpose. This fund type accounts for roughly twenty-six and a half percent of the total citywide budget. Special Revenue Funds for twenty-four is projected to be forty-seven million dollars. And this represents an increase of, uh, twenty-two point seven million or ninety-three percent from the previous year. Similar to the general fund, the special revenue funds will see the same general type increases. We see salary increases, we see increases to general liability and workers' compensation insurance costs due to the national market. We're also seeing an increase to information management, management charges as we move towards a cloud-based platform. And then we see increases to fuel and utilities. Now, when we look specifically at some of the funds, we wanna identify what those increases can be in these funds. Local street funds will increase due to an increase in the number of local street projects that were planned. Rubbish collection fund increases due to planned capital purchases such as a front-end loader truck, a loader-packer truck, a backhoe, a brush collector. And note that even though they're seeing that increase, the rate, the household rate stays the same at two hundred and forty. And then, um, the Public Safety Milledage Fund increases roughly two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And this is basically due to increase to the real property, uh, tax revenues. Again, this fund pays for thirty public safety officers. The Public Safety Grant Funds increased because of us adding back the Department of Justice JAG grant. Normally, we would budget zero. This time we end up allocating funds, uh, upfront in the year. The Downtown Development Authority 2011 Fund has a higher appropriation of funds from the Community Development Block Grant as well as an allocation of grant disbursement monies. So that increased slightly. Community, uh, Development Block Grant, um, sees a slight increase in their federal entitlement monies. And then, like I said, the largest increase that you're gonna see in this fund type is coming from the American Rescue Plan Fund, um, which increases over twenty-two million dollars from the previous fiscal year. And this increase will account for City Council-approved allocations for public health, youth and workforce development, administration, and revenue replacement. Now, these increases do have an offset, uh, reductions in funds. And we're seeing that in your major street funds where we see a decrease in the number of planned projects that are planned for the year. Um, however, even though they're decreasing in total, they have allocated monies for the purchase of a salt brine production plant, 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 a hook loader, anti-icing tank, a plow truck upgrade, and a new salt asphalt crack sealer. We will see decreases both in the CDBG residential loan as well as the block grant home program due to a decrease in their carryforward of monies as well as a decrease in the, uh, grant disbursement. Saginaw Economic Development Fund will decrease, and that will decrease based on a decrease in the use of fund balance. Our third fund type is our enterprise funds. And you can see that this represents roughly forty-six percent of the total citywide budget. Uh, the enterprise fund for fiscal year twenty-four is projected to be eighty-one point eight five million. And this represents an increase of about eighteen point nine million or thirty percent from the previous fiscal year. Um, similar to the general fund and special revenue fund, the enterprise fund sees the same type of, uh, general increases, salary increases, increases to general liability, workers' compensation, insurance costs, increase to information management due to the, uh, uh, cloud-based platform as well as, uh, fuel and utilities. Um, on the revenue side, I need to mention this, that for, uh, the year beginning July one, the water and op, uh, sewer operation and maintenance funds do reflect the City Council-approved, uh, rate increase. Um, however, that's not the only cre, increase on revenues that we realize for the water and sewer fund. We also see, uh, realize a reimbursement for some of the larger projects from the state through the, either the Clean Water Revolving Fund or the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, um, from the state of Michigan. And both funds actually utilize a higher appropriation of routine. Now, looking specifically at the sewer operation, you will see that this will increase eight point one five million for a total, uh, budget of thirty-two point one seven million. Um, the increases, um, again, is due to increase in the capital purchases as well as debt service. Uh, these planned projects include the Hancock CSO Basin repair as well as the river crossing projects. You will also see, um, line item increases for streets and road materials, pavements, patching, um, street patching, or sewer cleaning and televising repairs, chemicals, parts and supplies, general repairs, construction projects, and engineering services. Now, all those increases is actually reduced by a significant decrease to the city's indirect cost allocation. So that's normally money that's, uh, sent to the general fund for services that they provide to other funds. This year, the MAXIMUS Plan came back showing a significant decrease to both water and sewer. On the Water Maintenance and Operation Fund, you will see it will increase ten point seven five million for a total of forty-nine point six six million. Um, this increase is due to, again, you have, uh, some planned capital purchases as well as increase in debt service. And again, the planned projects are your elevated storage tanks as well as your lead and galvanizing line repairs. Similar to the sewer fund, you will see increases to chemicals. We've seen increases already this year for chemicals. Um, pavement patching, street patching, parts and supplies. We also see a slight increase to Saginaw Midland Water Supply System, um, annual payment, engineering services for, uh, surplus division. And then, um, construction projects as water, as well as water sewer improvements and constructions. Again, indirect costs will offset this increase. And then my little disclaimer here is for more details on these changes, we do have a presentation by Phil Kawak and Mike Grignier on the Sewer and Water Operation and Maintenance Fund. Internal Service Fund, um, Internal Service Funds accounts for goods and services provided from one, by one department for another cost reimbursement basis. And this fund type represents roughly five percent of the citywide budget. Internal Service Fund for fiscal year twenty-four is projected to be nine point seven million. And this is an increase of one point zero five million or thirteen percent from the previous year. As I've already mentioned, we see the same increases, uh, general increases that we've seen in the general fund, these, uh, and special revenue funds and, and the enterprise funds. But when we look specifically at each of the different, uh, funds of the Internal Service Fund, you see increases in the Public Works Building due to an increase in utility costs. Um, Technical Services IS will see increases for, uh, training and development as well as software maintenance. Um, Technical Service IT or IS, you're seeing increases to computer software uh, as we convert to, um, a cloud-based platform. The motor pull, um, will increase as it relates to minor garage tools as well as the purchase of a shop truck through the Ford Municipal Buyback Replacement Program. And as I've said previously, you'll see increases to the self-insurance fund and the workers' comp fund due to significant increases of insurance rate nationwide as a result of the na, nationwide, uh, economic conditions. Our final fund type is fiduciary funds. And fiduciary funds accounts for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities besides the city. Again, this fund type represents point zero two percent of the total citywide budget. And this is actually a decrease because it's normally point zero three percent. So we see a decrease. Okay, so, uh, fiduciary funds for fiscal year twenty-four is projected to be thirty-four thousand nine ten. And again, this is the same as in the, uh, previous year. The fiduciary fund is basically comprised of our cemetery endowment funds, um, that's accounted for in this fund type. And this, these funds are legally restricted resources that are twenty-five percent of cemetery revenues collected in our general fund. These revenues can only be used for cemetery care purposes in accordance to the city charter. So, um, this is basically following the city charter. So that is the hundred thousand mile view of the budget. Again, um, the Office of Ma, uh, Office of Management and Budget, we understand that the budget can be a little bit overwhelming. And we invite city council members to meet with us to discuss any questions or any concerns that you may have. Now, as part of the packet you've received tonight, you should have received an, uh, invitation from us saying, um, we have several dates and times that we will be available to meet with you to discuss your questions as it relates to the budget. Um, should you like to meet, please contact the City Manager's Office to schedule that meeting. So at this time, I'm open for questions.
I have a question, same question I ask every year. City Manager. When we gonna give up some of this endowment money for our cemeteries?
The endowment money is regulated actually by a state law, so we have to put so much into that fund, the percentage of the fees. The only amount that we can withdraw from there, I believe, is the interest. So we did change, it's probably been almost ten years now. We just, we did change our investment structure there. So we earned quite a bit more interest than we used to. There was probably a period there when we didn't, when the market was bad. But we did make changes so we could withdraw more of that out, but you can't touch that principle.
We need to try to figure out a way to get some of that money so we can fix our cemeteries up. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much.
I, I will be scheduling because I have several questions. But one question I, I do have, if you can answer it now. You talked about thirty public, uh, safety officers. Could you go back over that a little bit? Because it went so fast, I didn't.
Okay, so the public safety millage is made up of thirty officers, and that's both police and fire. You have twenty-one, um, police officers and nineteen firefighters. So, um, basically you're paying for the salaries and benefits for, and that's based on our public safety millage that's been levied. Um, that actually expires in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So what you're seeing is an increase in the, um, the real property amounts that covers that cost of the thirty officers, police and fire.
Oh, we need more officers. Okay. And one other thing, and I'll call, do, set up an interview, I mean, to talk. But you said something about decreasing retiree benefits?
Well, we're not decreasing benefits. We're actually, through the Medicare Advantage Program, we were able to reduce the, the costs. Normally, we see a pretty high, um, allocation per person for retiree healthcare costs. And so we're not reducing benefits. We're just, um, some of the costs have come down because, um, the previous, uh, HR Director ACM, he had moved us to a Medicare Advantage Program.
Yep, we did, the council did approve that, so if you recall. And we did, um, negotiate that with the Retiree Association as well.
Okay, I'll be calling you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Um, my question, thank you, Yolani. This is really, I like numbers, so this is fun. So, um, thank you for the work that you and our budget analysis. Analysts, thank you for what you all are doing. Uh, my question actually isn't about numbers. It's about the first portion of the report that I was just reading. And under our visioning and, uh, our visioning statements, our strategic planning and visioning statements, it's from twenty seventeen. Will we be having, and this is more so for the manager, are we planning to actually, because it's been the five years now. Has there since been an evaluation since it was done in twenty seventeen? And are we looking at possibly hosting, um, an update for that?
Yeah, we actually talked about that when we were putting the budget together. So this last one, yeah, what we noticed is, you know, we had, uh, like a five-year plan, but two and a half of the years were COVID-related. So, um, we're trying to determine, do we wanna have a, a whole new planning session? Do we wanna update these? And typically, when we do that, I know there's probably, there's several council members who've gone through it. But we usually bring in a facilitator to do that. We've worked with SVSU, um, before, and we worked with, um, I think we worked with ICMA before when we did it another time. But, um, uh, definitely something we wanna think about. Um, we, I don't think we included specific funds in this budget, but, um, I know we can find funding to do that where, um, we can either update it, update what we have, or do something new and put something together. But yeah, definitely, we're thinking maybe this fall. But yeah, definitely, we're thinking maybe this fall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I got a question about our unfunded liabilities. How are we coming on that? I mean, we was coming down, are we expecting that to go back up? I know we're not retirees. When people retire, they don't get the things that people used to get, right? So we got, we cutting it one way, and people dying this way, so it should be coming down.
So the OPEB liability, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is the retiree healthcare, that's gone down significantly, significantly because of the changes that we made initially where we consolidated the plans, if you remember that? And then the Medicare Advantage Plan, do you know what the number is now?
Right now, it's 88 million.
88 million, we used to be way above 200 million. So that's a pretty significant decrease in that, which is good. It's still a lot of money, you think of 88 million dollars, but it's a huge reduction that helps us a lot. And then our pension fund, you know, the funding ratio for that, we've struggled with. We always pay our ARC, which is our actuarially required contribution, which should keep you level. What most communities did see paying their ARC with their MERS pension was paying the ARC, decreasing in your funding valuation still. So most local units have struggled with that. We have been putting more into that fund, too. We have, I think, over a million dollars a year in addition to the ARC we've been paying to help with that. But there's also state grant funds, which some of you have learned about, that is supposed to help bring communities over 60%, I believe, so we're in the application process for that. We're on the eligibility list. I think that's due sometime this month in May, so we'll get that application into, and that should help us with that funding level for the pension.
Yes.
Tim, thanks for bringing that up, because I was going to ask where we're at, because you and I talked about that a little bit, too. The state legislators are working on this program right now that would fund pensions up to 60%. So Yolanda, great presentation, by the way, too, lots of details. I'm still reading the budget, the big 400 pages of it, and trying to get through it all, but did I hear some new staff positions? I took a few notes, it sounds like we have two police officers?
We're adding two additional police officers. We're also adding a planning intern. And then, as I said, the management team, we reviewed our organizational structure and looked at succession planning, because some of us are going to be retiring in about eight years, and the positions that we're not able to fill. And so we did some salary adjustments with that. We added a couple of deputies, but eliminated a couple of positions that were currently vacant. So we just had to make sure that our structure continues in the right path, and that's what we did for fiscal year 24.
Yeah, I was excited to hear some of these changes here, like especially in the economic development side, and then also on the inspection side, because I know our inspectors are very busy with buildings, besides all the other things that they're taking care of. So thank you. All right, thanks for the clarification.
Anyone else? Remember, my fellow council persons, you can set up an appointment with the fiscal department, going through, going through Mr. Rachel, and everybody receives a copy so that we can all get a clear understanding.
Thank you.
Who's the management update?
So we know we can look forward to Mr. Kawak and the other presentators that have to come behind you coming up soon.
Actually, those are videoed for you, so they're on the, they're on the webpage now, is that right, Yolanda?
I believe they're out there, yes. And they have been sent to the council.
So let me ask this question, so is the budget, actual budget online? Yes?
Yes, it is, as of today.
Okay, so our audience or our citizens, those that are interested that want to know the budget, they actually can go on now?
They can go online right now to view the budget, and it's also available in the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is that it? Okay.
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
I lost my papers. Okay. The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the agenda leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved in second.
I have one exception.
Yes?
Number 13.
Number 13.
Number 12.
Number 12. Are there any more exceptions? Hearing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our first exception is item number 12, approve the community development block grant COVID-19 amendment agreements and subrecipient agreements for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for $54,084. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
I want to, I want to, I motion to approve that, to approve number 12.
So she didn't have any questions, so she made, there's a motion on the floor to approve it. I need a second.
Support.
It's been supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk. Was he nay?
No.
Well, I heard something, so I wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear, because if you did, I'm going to say roll call vote.
Okay. Item 13 is approve the purchase with Rhodey Brother Excavating Incorporated for $369,311 for fiscal year 2024, pending budget approval for demolition services for Neighborhood Services Inspection Department Inspection Division.
My question is, how do we, don't the demolitions have to be bid on?
We actually hire, we do a long-term contract with a demolition contractor so that we can call on them anytime throughout the year, and we have a set price throughout the year that we can spend up to that amount on emergency demolitions.
This is only for emergency demolitions?
Yes.
So there's a possibility that we, okay, but what if, what if it just come up, if you just want to tear it out of something, and it's not emergency, can you still use money out of this?
No.
Council, isn't this the agreement for regular demolition services, but there was an option for, there was a third-year option in the contract, and the city's just exercised
Yep, this is our emergency demolition contractor that we've used for the last two years. There was an option for a third year at the same price, so we've accepted the third-year option.
But it was bid out.
It was bid out, yes. Back in 2021, it was bid out for a two-year contract with a third-year option. Rhodey Brothers won that contract, that bid, so we exercised the two years, and now we're taking advantage of the third-year option. Yes, yes, I apologize.
Thank you guys, too.
Yes, thank you.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve number 13?
I need, I've got a second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
Mayor, we are at Board Commission Committee Reports.
Do we have any reports? Yes, Councilman?
I do want to provide a brief report regarding the ARPA food insecurity. I've met with David as well as our feasibility study contractors. We've met a couple of times now, they'll be making a presentation on the 22nd. They will provide us with a memo in my conversations. I'm happy to meet with any of my colleagues that would like updates. I was going to do one, but I'd just rather talk than send a lot of words. There are some options that the feasibility contractors has for us that we have not entertained. I will tell you now, it may take more time, but the investment of what we would get out of it, it's a solid conversation. So that will be coming out in the memo prior to the presentation on the 22nd, 24th, 22nd.
Councilwoman, I see, did I see your hand go up? Okay, I'm sorry. Don't say it like that, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
We are now at ordinance introduction. We do have one tonight, and it's ordinance to amend the official city map to rezone to 2100 and 2300 Hartstuf Street from M1 Light Industrial to R1A Residential Agriculture of the Table of Special Ordinances.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. This ordinance will be laid over per the zoning act.
We are now at ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first one is to amend sections 153, 021, 197, 282, 317, and 347, and by adding a new section titled Solar Energy Systems, by adding sections 153.625, 626, 627, and 628 of Chapter 153 zoning code of Title 15 land usage.
I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second ordinance tonight is to add low-income housing tax exemption for Saginaw-Shiawatchi Habitat for Humanity to the Table of Special Ordinances, Section 8.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we're at resolutions. Our first one is to recognize the United Together Lupus Foundation as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
Our second resolution tonight is authorize the change in the standard street lighting contract with Consumers Energy Company for the Public Services Department Engineering Division.
Need a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at miscellaneous business. Our first item is consideration of a FOIA appeal submitted by Patrick Shaltrey.
I need a motion to uphold the disclosure denying pretense to Patrick, how do I pronounce his name?
Shaltrey.
Shaltrey. On April the 7th, 2023, for the FOIA request and issue a written response relating to the same.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
It's been moved as support. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
Our second item is consideration of a second FOIA appeal submitted by Patrick Shaltrey.
I need a motion to grant in part and deny in part response pertaining to Patrick Shaltrey's, I'm sorry for messing up his name, April the 7th, 2023, FOIA request and issue a written response related to the same. I need a motion. It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Is there any other motion? Or any other, any other motions, right?
I have a question, not a motion. I'm trying to figure out, and I mentioned this before, how this particular part only become motions, and in the past, it wasn't just motions, it was miscellaneous, and now it says for motions. I'd like to know how it happened, who did it, what was going on? Because I thought when we got to miscellaneous, it was miscellaneous for whatever a councilperson deemed miscellaneous to share. So who can ever answer that question?
One of y'all could answer, because I don't have the answer.
Okay, I'm getting a nod from the city manager, so I will let you know that when we have FOIA appeals received by the city, there's a timeframe that we have to act upon this. So the city attorney does that review with staff, and we have to timely get it on the next meeting agenda. So we received this, it has to go on this agenda, therefore, you received your memo, I believe, today from the City Manager's Office. We have to act upon this in that timely manner so it goes on the agenda under miscellaneous.
Thank you, but that's not my question. My question is, under miscellaneous and time passed, miscellaneous was for whatever deemed miscellaneous, and a city council member could speak at that time about a miscellaneous item, and now it just says to make a motion. I want to know how that changed, who changed it?
Miscellaneous business is business, therefore, it's done by motions. So you need a motion under miscellaneous business to take your action. It's not just a free-for-all.
Okay, it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that in our information for council, and we've done that before, so my thing is, why has that changed? Because I could come and I have been asked that.
With all due respect, Councilwoman Sylvia.
Beg your pardon?
With all due respect, there hasn't been a major change. I mean, we had, how many times did I call council out on, you need a motion to, under miscellaneous business? I've tried to correct and guide this council in that manner. So that is what we're doing. We're doing the correct process right now.
I'd like to have written information in regards to that, because I know recent.
You can submit that to the city.
Excuse me, are you going to let me finish?
You can submit all your requests.
Are you going to let me finish? Point of order.
Point of order.
Because I was talking, and I had to.
Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I would like to have shown written information, because I know in time past, even myself have made miscellaneous requests, and it wasn't a motion. So recently, that has been done in regards to saying it must be a motion. Actually, once it must be a question, so I need to know what it is, and I need to see that in writing, because when I looked at it, it doesn't say that.
In your email today, you have a memo addressing the FOIA request and stating that it would be on this agenda. That went out this afternoon from the City Manager's Office to all of council members.
I'm not talking about that. That's fine, I'm talking about miscellaneous in general.
I think she's just, she's just talking about generally. However, I think you have answered that question as well.
Thank you, City Manager.
The point of the, yes, it's supposed to be miscellaneous city business, so typically you would have to make a motion. Questions, as several of you have questions of the manager, you can ask during the management update, or, you know, other items during your three minutes. That's the order of the meeting.
Okay, that has changed, because it was not like that before, and so I don't think, due respect, you can't say that that question has been answered for me, because it's not. I'm still having that question, but I'm good, I'm good right now.
Yes.
I would just say, since I've been on council, motions were always supposed to be the business of the day under motions and miscellaneous. I think in the last few years, we've seen council members disregard that, and that's why we've seen situations where maybe we were talking about things out of turn and not making motions. But the way we are supposed to do it, it is supposed to be done in motion form or consensus form. So there has been no change. I'm pretty sure that's spelled out in our council rules of order. It is, it is, but if that's it, I'd love to, motion adjourned.
Yes.
Is it safe to say then that we have been operating out of order and the correction has been made? And that's all this says?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Second.
And I must apologize because I'm.
Mayor, you have a motion and a second. You have a motion and a second right now.
I didn't hear none, you see?
I didn't hear the second.
It's been a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right. Everybody have a happy Mother's Day.